I would like to call the Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Fanslaw. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg.
Got some scouts with us tonight, and I'd like to invite them up to lead us in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Got one special presentation tonight, and I'd like to invite Chief Whitit up. Chief.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Two weeks or twice in a row. I have the pleasure to introduce you to Jacob Henyon, and we are excited to have him. He actually has quite a bit of experience, but I'll read his bio here. Jacob grew up in Fort Calhoun, Nebraska, and graduated from UNO with a bachelor's degree and later a master's degree in criminology and criminal justice. He began his career in law enforcement in 2011 with the City of Alliance Police Department, and later served as an officer with the City of Round Rock, Texas Police Department for nearly five years, and that's where he comes to us from them today. Jacob's hobbies include woodworking, biking, and being outdoors. Jacob is here with his wife and their two-year-old daughter, and they moved back to Nebraska to be closer to family and friends, and we're incredibly excited to have him. Jacob probably doesn't want me to say it, but he was actually lieutenant at the Alliance Police Department before moving down to Round Rock, and now we have the fortunate of having him here, and I expect great things from him. But with that, I'll turn it over to introducing your wife and Mayor Black.
Want to introduce your family first?
Yeah, this is my wife Shelby, daughter Nova, and my mom Janet.
Would you read him? I state your name.
I, Jacob Henyon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of a police officer.
Perform the duties of a police officer.
According to law.
According to law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of.
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
By during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I'm in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. It was a great winter wonderland. It always amazes me how everything comes together each year for spectacular event. A big thank you to the Papillion Community Foundation, all the many volunteers, and especially the city parks, public works, police, fire, library, and recreation, and all other city employees who put in countless hours before, during, and after the event to make it great. Shadow Lake Town Center also held a great community event. They had their annual tree lighting and holiday parade on November 22nd. Santa and his elves showed up, along with a large number of community members. Thanks to everyone who made it and to Shadow Lake for hosting the event. And if you haven't already heard, Sarpy County Administrator Dan Hohens has been selected to be the sewer agency's first full-time agency administrator. His appointment is subject to Agency Board approval at their next board meeting, which is next Wednesday, December 13th. Along with his appointment, there will be a corresponding budget amendment to cover administrative costs presented for consideration. Higher-than-anticipated pilot fees will be the funding source of that budget amendment. And the agency is also currently doing a rate study update, which should be wrapping up here shortly. And then interviews for the four finalists for the two vacant police lieutenant positions are being held next week on the 12th and 14th, so look for an announcement and two oath of offices within the upcoming weeks. And then just a reminder, the Santa sightings at the landing, they will continue through December 21st, and there's more information on the dates and times for those sightings on the recreation website. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Mr. Mumgarth. Mr. Mumgarth.
Yes, I'd like to remove item C6 from the consent agenda.
C6 is polled. Okay. Any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C6.
A, E, zero, N, S.
Motion passes. Next is item C6. Resolution R230189, a resolution to award the Schwer Park Playground renovation project to Creative Sites of Omaha in the amount of $221,419. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230189?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Mumgarth, second by Councilman Kluk. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
I just wanted to bring this up to commend the staff for getting this project to this point. We've been working at it for quite some time. Schwer Park is a very popular park. Of course, that's where the splash pad is. The playground there has needed renovation for a number of years, and this is going to be a huge improvement in that playground. This is the same company that did the playground several years ago for the Terra Hills Park. Fantastic job. It's made that park very popular. So I'm very pleased to see this on the agenda. I'm going to vote for it, and we're going to start construction very soon and have ready for the kids to play in it next spring.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
A, E, zero, N, S.
Motion passes. Item D1, Ordinance 2017, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code Section 5510 to reflect current practice regarding voting on motions. Is there a councilman will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. D2, Ordinance 2018, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code 553 to adopt amendments as statutorily required by Nebraska Revised Statute 16404 regarding ordinance readings for the redrawing of ward boundaries. Councilman will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Kluk. E1, Ordinance 2014, an ordinance to amend Chapter 146 of the Papillion Municipal Code entitled "Door-to-Door Sales: Mobile Vendors and Facility Use and Event Permits" to add clarifying language into correct existing inconsistencies. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 2016, an ordinance to approve amendments to the Papillion Basic Municipal Employees Plan and Trust Agreement for the City of Papillion Firefighters Pension Plan and Trust. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R230185, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land in the southwest quarter. Section 25, Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner, Highway 370 and Highway 50. The applicant is SBNSK Realty LLC Mid-State Utility Trailers. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230185? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Mr. Fanslaw. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A, E, zero, N, S.
Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution R230186. It's a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve the City of Papillion's Affordable Housing Action Plan as required by Nebraska Revised Statute 195505. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents? Welcome in. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Amy Hazy, RDG Planning and Design, 1302 Howard Street, 681062. Thank you all for having us here tonight. We're excited to share kind of where this plan is at and answer any questions that you have on this. I'll try and run through this as quickly as possible, and then, again, available to open or answer any questions that you have. I like to hit a little bit on the why, the what, and the how, right? So starting with a little bit of the why. First of all, we're doing this because it is a state requirement under the missing middle housing legislation, often referred to as LB866. But it's also an opportunity to address a few key issues that we uncovered through the planning process. Thirty-five percent of our renters here in the community are cost burdened. The average new home sale price rose by 20% while existing home sale prices rose by 32%. So this is obviously raising the questions among a lot of folks and residents. Also, over the next 12 years, we're going to probably need about 2,800 households will need new affordable housing options across the community. So what does this plan do as it relates to some of these topics? One, it provides kind of a quick snapshot of the state of housing supply and demand that we have here in the community today. It assesses our gaps and opportunities. It also begins to identify, or it does identify our housing goals and some of those strategies. And last, as we mentioned, it addresses that missing middle housing requirements, or I also wanted to hit on just real quickly what the housing strategy, what this plan can and cannot do. So what it can do, it can establish and does establish a blueprint for policies and programs towards your housing goals. It will hopefully stimulate conversation, and has maybe already started to do that across the community around housing and what we all see as attainable housing. It hopefully can show our builders and our developers the high demand that exists out there for different types and product types, and will also hopefully motivate our partners out there who want to be at the table with regards to solutions as we move forward. What the study can't do, though, it can't force any builder to build any certain type of housing or really housing at all. It can't affect the challenges at the national level. Interest rates, supply chain issues, all of those things. However, we do hope it helps organize some policies and programs and those sorts of things that help decrease some of the risks around those topics. It also can't require redevelopment of any specific site or any building. I also want to hit on really quick a few common terms that we hear that sometimes I have people asking, well, what does that mean? And what does that mean to you versus to me? So one of those is the very word affordable housing, which is in the legislation. So housing for which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of their gross income on housing, including utilities. So this is the federal definition of what affordable housing means. You'll also hear folks talk about cost burdened. I used that in one of my earlier slides. That's households that are spending more than 30% of their income on housing are considered cost burdened. We also have heard the word missing middle a lot. So as Papillion, you're probably a little bit more familiar with this word, but because you do have an example here in the community of this, but it's a range of house-scale buildings with multiple units. So they're compatible in scale and form to a detached, single-family home, and they're usually located within walkable neighborhoods. So that's kind of the traditional definition of what missing middle housing is. Okay, so we, over the last few months, have been compiling both the demographic, economic, market analysis information, along with having a number of conversations across the community. We combine those together to identify some key issues and opportunities. So some of the opportunities that we identified, these first two bullet points really actually tie pretty closely together. Our need for greater housing variety, for people to have housing for every stage of life, but we also saw that there's a desire by individuals to age in place here in Papillion. So having those units that they can transition out of over time is a clear opportunity here. You have a high-quality housing stock. We are not talking about how do we deal with rehab issues? How many units a year can we demo because they're in such bad shape? That is not a topic we're having here in this study. I do have that in a lot of other communities that we work with, so that's a clear asset and an opportunity. You also have very distinct community character and reputation within the metro region and highly respected schools, which is a really important thing when we start talking about attraction of young families and continuing growing population. But what are some of our challenges? Attainable options for residents who want to age in place. So we talked about that. There's this opportunity to build a product that is appealing to individuals who want to stay here and age in Papillion, but that's also kind of a challenge sometimes, too, of how do we make sure that we have attainable, affordable units for those households? Limited housing variety, again, how do we make sure that it's both an opportunity and this challenge of folks want to live here at every stage of life, but do they have that housing product that's fitting their need? Just uncertainty with changing housing preferences. Right now, nationally, we're seeing, and especially probably here in the Midwest, we're clearly seeing beginnings of shifts, and the shift is being driven both by economics, what we're seeing from the overall market, those outside forces that we talked about that we can't control that are creating some of this shift. But we also have a new generation coming into the housing market, and they're desiring new things. The generation that's moving into their retirement years is also a different generation than their parents were, and they're looking for things that are probably different from what their parents wanted when they were retiring. So this is creating a lot of change in the market, and with change comes uncertainty. Limited supply of first-time homebuyer options was another challenge we frequently heard, and then affordable lot development, because the cost of that lot goes directly to the cost of the home and to the rental unit. So real quick, high-level, key goals that the strategies were based around, and I'm happy to talk about those in more detail if you have any specific questions, but we need to find and create mechanisms where we can share risk. You know, where can we fill those gaps between what it costs maybe and what some households can afford? Preserving our existing attainable housing. You have a great stock of quality homes. We did hear a lot of concern about, you know, some of our oldest homes in the community. How do we make sure that those remain attainable, affordable units for first-time homebuyers? So that was a key thing that we heard a lot through the listening sessions and even at Planning Commission. Also, how do we just continue to streamline the approval process? This is an important part that ties back to some of the LB866 requirements, so we did look at that specifically and completed some of those analyses. But happy to answer any questions that you might have. Hopefully, I wasn't doing the fire hose.
Mr. Fanslaw.
Hi, Amy. I have two quick questions, and I'll probably have some follow-up later, but can you, for the record, can you, I'm going to ask them, then you can just answer both of them. Can you, for the record, let everybody know when LB866 was passed?
Sure.
So how long we've known this is coming? And then can you talk a little bit about the listening sessions and the community outreach that you did?
Sure. So the legislation was passed in 2020, and went into effect in, I believe, the summer of 2020. So depending on the size of the community, there was a deadline for when this process needed to be completed. And there's also an annual reporting process that's separate from this that staff handles. And your other, so we did a round of some listening sessions with the schedule and time that we had and colluded all of the Planning Commission members, and we also reached out to some of the development community and so forth, too.
Anybody from the public, like, ever citizens, were they involved in those sessions here?
We, I think we had a few sessions where some folks were invited. I'm not going to say we had great attendance.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Stube.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gaines.
Hey, good evening.
Yes.
So are you familiar with the statute 195505? I didn't know what part you played in putting together this report.
So that's the statute specifically related to LB866, I think, right? I don't have the number right in front of me.
Right. And LB44, LB531 also.
Yes.
But my question is, is if you look at 195505, one, it's two parts in that section. Is number one, there has to be a goal for construction of new affordable housing units, including multifamily housing and middle housing, with specific types and numbers of units, geographic locations. And then the second part, in my opinion, is, and specific actions to encourage the development of affordable housing, middle housing, and workforce housing. As I read through this report, I did not see any specific action that the City of Papillion was going to take. What I saw was numerous actions that we could take, and that if we adopt this policy, a council in the present or future could adopt any of these. Can you tell me where in this presentation that there is a specific action that the city is taking to encourage the development?
So I think what you point out is a very good point, that there is kind of a menu of options from which the community can choose from. Up to this point, based on other communities that we have worked with, that has been okay and met the standard of what the legislatures look for and the committee that's come back and reviewed that, that they realize that there isn't one specific action that's going to solve this problem, and that it's going to take probably multiple entities or groups and along with the city, and multiple things that the city is going to need to do to address this issue. So I think overall, the legislative committee that reviews these reports and has reviewed the other ones from the other cities that have completed this, which includes Lincoln and Omaha, who had kind of similar action items identified, or a similar format, I should say, have been okay with that under the legislation, realizing that they were probably going to need to do multiple different types of things and bring in multiple partners. So is there one specific action that says this is the action that you need to absolutely do? No, because I think there's a mixture of some things that need to probably be happening to help address this issue, and from what we have seen so far, the state's been agreed with that.
So when you say, I thought I had the answer, when you said it met their standard, and then you spoke of the committee, is it the committee that you're saying it met their standard?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding from.
Okay, because the committee can't vote on anything. I mean, this is a state.
The state legislature's committee that, I should maybe.
Right. I understand, but my point is, is that the statute on its face calls for specific actions. So the report that was provided to the City of Papillion does not have any specific actions, and a committee of the state legislature can't give you verbal approval. This would have to go through, it'd have to be tested in court. So my point is, with this new of legislation, the only person that could authorize something and say if it was legal or not legal would be a court. Is that correct?
I guess I'm not an attorney. I'm not going to speak to that specifically.
Right.
I would like to go back, though, and.
Hold on one second, because I'm struggling with this because we waited till the end of the year to do it, and so now we're obligated by statute to do something or face penalties for not doing something. But my point is, would you agree that inside of this report, there are not any specific actions that we are taking per the statute?
Would, I would agree that there is not a recommendation that says this is the first action you need to take, and this is the second action you need to take. I do believe there are specific actions identified that the city can take to begin to address this issue. Then on an annual basis, the city will have to justify in their annual reporting why they haven't taken action on any of those items.
Okay. I don't mean to drill you. I just, when I read it, there are no specific actions in here. This is not an action plan. It's a menu of, it's basically if you go to a restaurant, and there's a menu of things you can order at the restaurant, but there's nothing, this doesn't say that you have to provide a bunch of options. It says provide specific actions, and that's my interpretation, so I appreciate your time.
Yeah. I guess I would say, I mean, I think on some of the code things, there's some very specific actions that are identified with regards to the code that can be taken to update and revise the code. So there are some very specific actions there.
But again, you say that can be taken. These are just options. They're not specific actions that we intend to take as a city to implement. It's just a cart launch of anything that's in here a future council could possibly do. It's not a specific action that we're taking to do something. That's my interpretation, but.
Okay.
Mr. Mumgarth.
I'm looking at the housing challenges section. I've had discussions with developers, and one in particular, who told me that the price of housing in Papillion, new housing in particular, has been dependent totally on land price and then on supply price, things that the developer was telling me he can't do anything about. You know, and I look at land price, I say, well, and I've heard people talk about, well, you know, how much land that's been farmland around the city that is now turning into houses. And I say, well, what can we do? This plan doesn't tell us anything that we can do to lower the cost of land, and it doesn't tell us anything we can do to lower the cost of supplies, construction supplies. You know, and talking to this developer, basically, the conclusion was it's beyond our ability, the city's ability, to do much that would affect the price of houses.
Probably the two biggest things when it comes to the kind of the land piece of it, yeah, the city, what the farmer wants to sell his piece of property for, the city can't probably have too much influence on that. But where we can, when we think about the land cost, is what we're putting into the land. So what sorts of partnerships or roles do we want to play in the development of the infrastructure that goes into getting that land ready for development? The other piece of it is how many units we're allowing them to build on that land, because the more units we have that they build on that one acre of land, the more they can distribute that cost of the land itself and of that infrastructure across more units rather than, you know, individual units, so.
You know, and dealing with the number of units that can be built.
Right.
Okay, then that raises, again, this developer was hitting me, saying, well, yeah, you're driving the cost up by having that 10-foot setback that we require throughout all of the new development, 20 feet minimum between houses. And we've had many, many developers tell us if we would just quit doing that, they would lower the price. I've never really bought into that. Number two, I don't much buy into how much that would lower the price, but I also look at and say, well, that seems to be a critical part of what people like in the housing of Papillion. And as this plan doesn't address that at all, I'm thinking, well, how do we balance that if that developer is right, or if he's just complaining? If he's right, okay, that's something we could do. Let's go down, let's go to the five foot, which some places have. I don't see, how do we balance that desire to make the houses more affordable with this desire to keep Papillion exclusive and, as I see, the highest median price in Sarpy County?
I think that ties directly into that kind of the uncertainty with changing housing preferences that we're seeing, too. There is a, I'm not going to say that there isn't still demand for those bigger lots, but I think, too, we have to recognize that folks are starting to realize maybe they don't want to maintain that much lot anymore, or they're realizing that I will take a smaller lot if it means. if it means I get a smaller price point for that, too. So, I think there's a little bit of that changing preference, and, you know, the argument that I've made in other communities sometimes, too, is, especially, you know, I'll hear from folks, well, this is what people want and what they're wanting to buy, but I also will sometimes make the argument of, like, are we saying that because that's the only choice people have, so they have to buy that if they want to be a homeowner, that's their only choice, and that's what they have to buy? Or are we really stepping back and listening to folks and really understanding what they're desiring? Again, that, you know, that retiree household that's like, I'd rather go watch my kids, my grandkids play soccer on the weekend than mow a big lawn anymore, kind of piece to it, too. So, making sure that we're kind of understanding some of the changes that are, that are happening in, in the market.
Well, okay, one of the other proposals that I've seen in talking to developers is, well, we set aside a certain, you can set aside a certain area of land that has changes, such as the five-foot setback, has changes where lower-priced houses are built. My fear, you know, and, yeah, the generality of the plan doesn't talk about this. I'm talking about, what, what am I having problems with? I look at that, and I think, well, yeah, I see, that might be okay. You'd develop, you would create, through incentives, create areas of new houses that are lower priced. And I think, but then I have that fear, that that creates a area that's perceived to be, that's the low-income, poor area. On the other hand, I don't find a lot of value in intermixing Omaha, or Lincoln. I've seen Lincoln intermix, you know, housing styles and stuff, and I think they do a lousy job of it. So, I don't see that. I struggle with balancing that.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's probably, there are probably, I don't, you know, I can't speak to the Lincoln one, but I think there are probably examples of where we can mix different types of housing in kind of the same neighborhood, you know? When you drive into a neighborhood and you maybe first see the attached units, and then there's this smaller, single-family, um, small lot, and then you go back into them, and there, you're maybe getting into the, some of the larger lots. So, you see those neighborhoods out there that maybe do a better job of it than others, because I, I think you're right. Where, where can we create opportunities where the household that's making, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars a year can live in the same neighborhood? Maybe not, maybe they are right next door, maybe they're just in the same neighborhood, but as the household that's making two hundred thousand dollars a year, being in that kind of same neighborhood together, I think would be...
My perception, and maybe this is entirely wrong, is the guy, the family that's making two hundred thousand a year then feels put upon in that they now have neighbors that are in the smaller housing making seventy-five. And may, maybe I'm just imagining that that's going to be true. I hope not. I hope it wouldn't be. But, that's, those are the difficult, some of the difficulties I've been seeing in trying to come up with some clues, conclusions about what a city can do to create this housing. Thank you.
Thank you. I share some of the same concerns that Councilman Gaines expressed, overly vague. This whole thing seems to me to be overly vague. I don't see anything concrete here. An interesting point that I think was mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting, I think Mr. Keller might have brought it up. He asked about prefabricated housing, and how, I, I think there was some discussion of how that's a, a lot better quality than it used to be, and it's actually being built on solid foundation now. That's not any part of this plan that I see, but that could be one solution to the cost of, of building a structure for maybe a young couple that wants to get their start in Papillion. I can't support this right now. It's, it's not a plan. It's just a, it's just sort of a throw-it-against-the-wall list of choices, is what it seems to me. And although eight sixty-six requires us to pass a plan by January first, it does not require us to pass this particular plan. And I think it needs improvements, so I'm going to vote against it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Eber.
Good morning, Mayor. To Councilman Memder's point, I, you didn't mention this, but I wanted to point out that, um, when it comes to, uh, lot, property costs, that kind of thing, you did mention in this report, um, mechanisms to share risk, uh, which were, which are, I would guess, a little unique to us. We've, some things we've not considered before, like community land trusts, um, difficult development areas like HUD has, has pointed out, we do have one area that that might apply. Um, this is really something we haven't done, nonprofit developers, um, site costs and that kind of thing, along with, um, economic development funds and housing development funds, and we rarely use TIF, and we probably don't you, need to use it in many places here, but that's also a consideration. You did mention that in the report. I just wanted to point that out for everyone, that there are some options in here for us to consider. I appreciate it, because some of it, um, I think is something we haven't really dealt with much. So, I appreciate you pointing out some avenues we could take, uh, to make some specific choices. So, I wanted to mention that you do have that in here.
Yeah, and, and I think that's, that's a, a good point, that on some of those action items, you wouldn't apply them to every single project. I mean, you mentioned, like, the TIF piece. You wouldn't do that with every project, but it is a very specific action that the city could choose to take with the right parameters and the right projects. Yeah.
Mr. Fanslow.
Thank you. Tom, I'm going to kind of maybe comment on some of the things you said and give my opinion on it. So, there are a lot of people in every community, but we're talking about Papillion, who can't, who don't make two hundred thousand dollars a year, and those are our firefighters, our policemen, our teachers, our people who work retail. We've seen, I've seen a handful of developments come through since I've been on this council that require a certain workforce. And if we continue, in my opinion, if we continue to build housing for the two hundred, Tom, I'll use your number, just as an example, if we continue to build housing for the two hundred and thousand-plus families, I don't know how we recruit people to work in the developments that we approve. I don't know how we retain young people who might want to go into education, might want to be a police officer, might want to be a firefighter, works retail, whatever that is. I, I think we have a responsibility to retain those residents in our communities, so we continue, continue to build a community of, a variety of people. And I think that variety of people requires a variety of housing stock. So, while some have said the plan doesn't have any certain actions or goals, I, I agree, I, I've heard from Amy before, that the, the committee at the state level is, is, has been satisfied with the plans that have been passed before. Um, we talk about things we can do. When I was out and about in the city last year, I heard a few things, and, and two of them are in this report. It's the need for a variety of housing, which I very touched on. And when I'm done living in my ranch, single-family home, but I still want to live in Papillion, where, where can I go? And if I look around the city that we're building now, I, I don't see a lot of options. So, I'm a little concerned about that as we move forward, and I would, I would support policies that let us all age in place in the community that we serve and that we love. Two things I think we can do is, and I think this council did a handful of months ago, is help preserve, preserve the existing housing stock. And I think we, we took an action with the Property Maintenance Code that goes towards that goal of preserving that great stock that we already have. And I think that's vitally important for this community to continue to protect that older housing stock. And there, we can, we can streamline processes inside City Hall, so it doesn't take, so, and I don't know what those, I'm not saying anybody's not streamlining, but I think by helping, and this is in the report, too, by helping streamline our processes, administrative processes, or entitlement processes, yeah, we can't guarantee that that cost savings is going to be passed down to the end user, but we can sure try to do everything we can in hopes that those cost savings and that variety of housing stock and those options and the inventory that we put online can be passed down to the end user. So, thank you, Amy.
Mr. Glover.
That I can better understand this process. You're talking about a list of ten, maybe ten things that we might do to satisfy the state's requirements. About list of things, at what point do we, as a council, sit down, or a committee as a council, sit down and say, we want to try this, 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 and this, this year? And then, the next year, you, you start the process over, and if you didn't get to those five things, then you, you do the ones that you talked about, and then look at some other things. And then my other question, then, is, so, if, if you put that list of things out there, and some, at some point during the year, we come up with a, with a very good idea that'll help move our process forward, or, or be another thing that we could do, and it's not on that list, can you add it to that list at any time, or, or is that just done once you turn your list in?
Oh, uh, to the state, you mean of, like, of your study or your annual reports?
Of, of the things that, your annual report of the things that you would like to do. Can you add something that wasn't on that list all the way through the year?
I would, I don't, I don't believe there's anything in the legislation that says you can or can't do that, so I would say that you probably could. And I would think that, I would hope that, in a way, that would even be encouraged. I mean, your communities and your policies and these action items should evolve. You know, you, you identify, as you said, the next, kind of, or you maybe were alluding to, the, the next step in this process is to probably sit down and say, okay, we have these action items, of these action items, which ones do we want to prioritize in twenty twenty-four to try and kind of, and to move forward? And that, that's a great thing to include into that report. And then in the next year, to say, okay, we, we learned these lessons from implementing these action items. This has changed in the economy. Interest rates went up, or when interest rates went down, and we're adding this to our list. I think that's a really healthy way to, to view this as a living plan for you. That's my opinion.
And then if something doesn't work, you...
Right.
You kick it out?
Mm-hmm.
And, and you're allowed to do that because...
Yep, yep.
It was on your plan to start with?
Yeah, you've, 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 um, worked towards implementing the plan, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Klug.
Thank you. We always have to start someplace, and sometimes we get the kick in the behind from the state saying we need to do something. I feel like Papillion had actually started doing many things about affordable housing and missing middle housing before this came along. It's good to have all this information compiled, brought together, where all of us can have a great starting point. This is our first one, and I think it's a heck of a great job getting us that starting point. Thank you. I appreciate that. Because if we don't have something like this, that all of us can look at and refer to, we keep talking about things in the sky. This gives us a working beginning. Is it perfect? No, but show me a plan that we've ever put together that's perfect the first time. That's, that's pretty hard to come up with. This is a significant and solid foundation for us to work with in twenty twenty-three, and as Councilman Glover commented, we can change it. We can figure out things as we go and keep making it a great document. I'm going to vote for this. I think it's a great way for us to get started on having that affordable housing that we need. I do want to address that every year or two, we have a council retreat, and at our council retreat, we talk about the things we want to see happening in the city. And we always seem to come back to some, we need some diversity going on in this city. And the idea that we shouldn't just be an exclusive community, but that we need to be a welcoming community, the diverse community that says, we need everybody here. All law-abiding citizens are absolutely welcome in this community. And when we lose sight of that, and we are more worried about the person who is buying the two hundred thousand dollar home than we are the college student that wants to come back home and work and be our teachers and our police officers, or who wants to drive into Omaha and start their restaurant, start it here, please. We love restaurants. But my point is, we need to stop, and as, um, Councilman Fanslow says, you know, we need to look at what the different people need in this community to make us a stronger community. So, I certainly hope that, as a council, we do a little bit more about not giving lip service to Papillion needs some diversity, but we start letting the rubber meet the road with our actions of how we make this happen. And better people don't have to have ten-foot side yards. Better people don't have to have a standalone home. And we have a golden opportunity to start proving that. And I hope we move forward quickly in the next year or two and start making this diversity a reality.
Mr. Ringberg.
Thank you. I agree with Councilman Fanslow, and I don't want to get deep in the weeds on any of this now is not the time, but I look at this as, uh, very similar to our comprehensive plan. And I said this from years ago, and I still maintain that, uh, this plan will be just like our comprehensive plan. It's a living, breathing document. It's something that we go back to, and we adjust, and we massage until we have something that works well, or change if we need it. For example, a simple thing, um, that comes to mind is, is, um, we have a, if you look at the demographics of the city, we're, we're starting to get into a, a, an area where we're going to have quite a few, it looks like, empty nesters, and people that are getting older. We have an aging population, uh, in many ways. And there's, as Mr. Fanslow said, there's not a real lot of variety or any place to go necessarily, but if we target that demographic, that frees up houses, particularly in our older areas, that will be underpriced of, of others that we have in, um, more high-priced areas. That creates turnover. It creates a livability for young couples, people starting a family. So, just relatively simple things like that, um, I think is something we can look back on, on this document, is something, as Council, Councilmember Klug said, to trigger some thought process. The second thing is, when we did that property management, uh, developed that here recently, um, Councilman Glover mentioned something to me, and we've had some discussion about it, it's something that he and I have decided we want to pursue with city staff, is, we, we don't really stop and think about it, but, um, we have houses in Papillion that literally have sat vacant for ten, fifteen years or longer. And these, we're not talking about little tiny places to rehab. We're talking about houses where people just moved to another state and they just sit there. I know one in my ward has been there fifteen years. And our discussion, uh, was about, um, coming up with a way to re-seed that house, um, to a, a targeted, um, first home buyer, and allow them a means to get into it with the agreement that they'll rehab it to our standard, and, uh, enable them to, to do that. So, there's a lot of directions we could go, uh, and I think this, as you said, Councilmember Klug, this is a good starting point, and it's something I'm sure we'll adjust as time goes along.
Mr. Fanslow.
Time, I promise. I'm not big on the state telling us what we have to do. So, can you tell me what happens if Papillion doesn't pass this plan? What, what ramifications are we facing from some body that we can't control or at least have influence with?
Sure. Specifically, it retires to your zoning ordinance, and you would be required to allow, um, middle-density housing in all your residential zoning districts if this isn't approved. I think it also would probably affect things like, uh, those trying to go after some of the new workforce housing programs. I think they would probably look at it, too, and, and ding you on those applications, too. There's no specific requirement, I don't believe. There's no specific requirement, I don't believe, in there, but it would affect you on things like that, too.
We're currently in a public meeting, but when we're in council discussion, I'll answer your questions specifically to the penalties.
I just want to clarify what was just said. That's if we don't pass a plan, not this specific plan. So it doesn't all write on this specific plan necessarily. Everybody understand that. There's other options besides this plan.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents or any opponents? Welcome, sir. And if you'd state your name for the record.
Nick Dolphins, I'm the vice president of the Home Company, and I live at 1450 Hardwood Drive. I'm a proponent in passing this as it's stated. We use Edsel Charles from Market Graphics at work as a consultant of ours. We use him at MOBA, which I'm on a board at MOBA, and I know a lot of the lenders and banks in the area use Market Graphics. He's in 37 markets in 21 states. He said he's never seen a metropolitan area with this much housing demand. The other thing he said in our office is, "We ought to be ashamed of ourself." There's 36 markets hitting price points we're not hitting in the metropolitan area, and the price point specifically is $300,000 and lower. So I took that personally. I mean, that kind of hit, that hit hard with me as, you know, it's a career, and I'm from the area, and live in Papillion. I think we need to look at a plan like this as the first 1% of what we need to do. And I think it's going to take everybody in this room to look at what we've done over the years to create some of these problems that are affecting the whole country, but affecting us more. I mean, it's decisions we've made on the developer end, the builder end, the city, everybody. We really need to take a hard look at that. So I'm on the Affordable Action Housing Plan with the City of Omaha. We've been meeting monthly. Their plan isn't significantly different than this. I agree with you, there's no specific things that you're voting on today. I think you're voting on, this is the direction we need to head, and we need to do a lot of work from this point forward. Regarding the housing variety, I think that needs to be our focus. The fixed costs, there are fixed costs. I mean, you're not, you can only negotiate so much with a farmer, I mean, and rightfully so, on their family land. But there's a lot of feeling like there's death by 10,000 pinpricks when you're in this industry, and I think we just really need to do the hard work of looking at all of that. And if we're looking at housing variety, the 70-foot suburban lot is one housing type for one type of demographic. And we need to look at all the demographics we're leaving out of this great city. There's a lot of them. And when you have a national consultant shaking his finger at you and saying it's shameful, I think it deserves us to sit up straight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaines.
Sir, I have a question for you. If, when you, when you mentioned that specific actions, and I miss where you were from. Where are you from again?
I, I live in Savannah Shores.
Okay. And I was asking, you said you were on the, on a committee in Omaha?
Yeah, I, just, so, I'm on the MOBA board, and so I sit at the Omaha Committee for the Affordable Action Plan.
So what do you think the two most important things are for an affordable action plan? What, what specific actions, the two most important initials, specific actions that a community could take to start promoting more affordable housing?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think some of these ideas to get rid of risk are exciting. I know, being on the developer side, a lot of the attorneys and engineers are really worn down of how long it takes to get approval for things. I see on your end how that protects the community, but if it takes too long, all of that risk goes on the developer while you're earning interest, and you're getting nothing for that whatsoever. So if you identify, yeah, I'd like to see something like this in this area, you're protecting the suburban homeowners that you have, that might not want, across their backyard fence, a dramatically different community. We all understand that, but there's places in the community for all of these products that we've left by the wayside. You shouldn't, you shouldn't have to go live in an apartment if you can only afford a certain amount.
Well, what, you gave me one, can you give me another one that you think would be?
Yeah, I think, so that's one of them. I think, I don't think there is one. I think, you know, if I made a list and had one that was, you know, $1,000 instead of $800, I think you'd be doing the whole long list a disservice. So I'm sorry to be, I'm not trying to be evasive, but it's a lot, it's a long list of things, and having five more feet to mow in your side yard is one of them. But it, that's not, there's no one silver bullet. Otherwise, you know, the city, the state wouldn't have mandated this if there was an easy answer.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate the question.
I appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 230186?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Council discussion. I know we've had a lot. Mr. Gaines.
Okay, to answer, because I do understand that, as Mr. Sunday said, that we do have to pass something tonight. According to 195505, Section 4, "Any city which fails to adopt an affordable housing action plan as required under subsection 1 of this section shall be required to allow the development of: A) Middle housing in all areas of the city zone for residential use that allow for development of detached single-family dwellings; and a duplex on each lot or parcel zone for residential use that allows for the development of detached single-family dwellings. A city shall amend any building zone, excuse me, zoning ordinances or regulations as needed to comply with subsection 4 of this section." So that is the penalty. So, pretty severe penalty, and so I do understand that. The, the problem that we're, that I'm facing here is that, number one, is this, and this goes for anything, is that this council can't pass an ordinance, and then have a developer come to one of our committee meetings and say, "Hey, I want to do this, is this okay?" It's not authorized. So with a brand-new law like this, the only thing that's going to test it is time in the courts. But I can tell you that the plain reading of 195505 states that the city needs to have specific actions. What we have on this report in front of us, they're not specific actions. They're a menu of possible actions, and when we had the presentation, we heard the word "can," "you're able to," "you may choose to," we heard all these words. Those are not specific actions. So we're trying to be in compliance with something. And, and Ms. Klug, I agree with you. Everybody needs a starting point, and I don't, I just don't think that what this is doing is a good starting point. As we sit here today, I don't think this council would pass a number of these options that I'm going to mention. Maybe we wouldn't amend them, maybe we'd amend them this year, and it wouldn't be an issue next year. Maybe we don't. So let's talk about fireworks, because it took us three years to amend fireworks, to get where, we're pretty much back to where we were in the very beginning-ish. And so, we can't just pass something today that if we don't fix it, in five years, not a member of this council or the mayor could be sitting in these chairs. We could all, we could have a brand-new council and a brand-new mayor, and they could come in here and elect to do any of these options that we're authorizing today. Not that they can't come back later and, and change it. So, one of the things that, that bothers me is that, one of the options that we have under this plan is a, is a, the city makes a plan to stop investors from purchasing property. Because this investor has, has devoted his time, his credit, his money, and that's what he does for a living. But one of the suggestions under this plan, and it says it right in the plan, is that the homeowners, some residents express a concern that older housing is being purchased by investors who are competing with first-time homebuyers. And then it says that part of that plan, one of the options that we have, is address the competition between investors and first-time homebuyers. How does a city do that? How does a city go out? And I'm not saying, we're not authorizing anything today, except for, we're saying that this is the city's policy, that we're able to do these things if the city council elects. But how does a city restrict a private investor, a private businessman, who, I don't care if they live in a three-quarters of a million-dollar house or a $5 million house, because my home's probably the cheapest home on, anybody on this council? And so, well, one of them. But the point, the point being is that it doesn't matter what this man or woman or organization has done to build their wealth, this is America. We can't restrict their right to conduct business freely. And we're not doing that by approving this tonight, but we are authorizing another council to do that if they choose so. Second point is that, and when I got on council, I didn't need these glasses, by the way, so. My second point is that, you know, it says in, in creating, create incentives for missing middle-density housing. And, and some of those incentives are lowering our building standards. I'm not saying that we can't do that, or that we shouldn't do it, but that's not really an incentive. Throughout my entire time on council, we have always had these high building standards, and we were very proud of it. But we're going to lower our building standards as incentives for people to come in, build cheaper homes, build homes with, you know, apartment buildings with, that are aesthetically unpleasing, you know? And that's not my biggest one. My biggest one is actually, let me find it here, is one of these options that we're electing is that the city residents pay for 30% to 50% of the construction costs of development. And it says it right in, right in the plan, that they pay for 30% to 50% of the cost of construction. So, when we're sitting here, five, six years ago, three years ago, I lose track of time, I'm fighting for the people of my ward over a nominal water rate increase. Because these people sit here and they live on a fixed income. We're talking about helping other people to come into our community that have income issues, but what about the people that are already in our community that can't pay their bills because their water, their water bill went up $40 a month? Or they had to cut something out of their life? So, while I'm not hitting any panic buttons, saying, "We're destroying the city of Papian if we approve this tonight." What I'm saying is, we're at least authorizing it unless we take some sort of action in the immediate future to change it. I'm not personally willing to write a blank check for any of these things to come back before council again, because none of these things have come to us by us. And so, generally speaking, when we go to our committees, we sit in our committees and we decide, "Hey, I think this is a good idea, and I think this is a good idea." And we come up with ideas, and we bring these plans to the council. Well, guess what? We don't have time for that now, because we have to pass something. Okay? So I am making a motion to amend actions to actually have some specific actions. And the number-one thing is, to promote affordable housing, I would like to give priority in processing of applications for developments that encourage affordable housing that are mentioned in this report, the types that are mentioned in this report. The number-two specific action is, in our monthly letter, our monthly water bill, I want to promote the financing, its incentives for first-time homebuyers, including NIFA and other state and federal assistance programs that they can go out and seek assistance with. And then number-three, that this policy be reviewed by a committee in January or February, whatever the first, to see if there's any additions, subtractions, or changes that are made to it. If we pass this amendment tonight, we pass something that complies with state statute. That's all we need to do. And we're not writing a blank check that if we forget to do it, if we just don't do it, if, all you have to do, and the only person, Councilmember Fanslaw wasn't here, but it took us three years to fix fireworks. So if it takes us three years to fix this, at least half of us are going, all of us could be gone almost. I'm going to do the quick math, but, you know, that's all I'm asking, is for the rest of the council, we have to pass this plan, or we, we're going to be punished by the state. I feel, and I asked the gentleman up here what his number-one and number-two, his number-one was providing priority in processing applications, which I already had written down on my sheet. And so, we're doing what the state requires, and we're doing what's responsible, because if we don't come back, and this slips through, one, two, three, four, five, six years, and none of us are here anymore, we no longer have any control over what our policy is in the city. That's all I'm asking, is to pass something reasonable today, send it to committee, let the council decide what our specific plan is, because that is what the statute calls for, and, you know, it literally, and specific actions to encourage the development. So I say if we pass it as is presented, we're in violation of state statute, and it's irresponsible. So I would hope that everybody would, would just pass a plan tonight that seems reasonable to me at least, and we sit down in the next month or two and, and move forward if we want to make additions, subtractions, changes. That is my amendment that's on the floor.
Okay. So, two quick things. I want to clarify the motion to amend, and then I think Ms. Hutter has one comment for clarification. So the motion to amend that was made is to, basically, it's a substitute motion in effect, to replace the plan that we're looking at, and change it to be, one, promote affordable housing by one, giving a priority of processing for applications that have a missing middle or affordable component. Number-two, in our water bill, promote and advertise specific existing financing programs like NIFA and those types of programs. And then number-three, take it back to, take this back to a committee for any further reviews or discussions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, two things. First, we have a motion on the, a motion to amend. I'll look for a second, and then if that passes, so, Councilman Sunday is a second. So the motion to amend is on the floor. Ms. Hutter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that the, the plain language of Nebraska revised statute 195505 requires goals to achieve a specific purpose, i.e. the construction of new affordable housing unit. And those goals are to include the items such as types and numbers of units, geographic locations, and the specific actions. So the goals are what is required to be, to be possessed, to be passed by the city, and those goals are to include those other items. I believe that the plan as proposed, this particular resolution, is in compliance with the statute, with or without Councilman Gaines's amendment.
Thank you. So any, we have a motion to amend and a second. Any council discussion? Mr. Stube, on the motion as amended, on the, on the motion to amend.
So I'll just make some general comments. So I, I'm not going to approve the, or support the motion to amend. And I kind of look at it from the perspective is that the, the state legislature, and I don't know what the vote was, said we have to comply with a certain law. And from what I heard from the presenter today is that the plan that's in front of us, and again, it's a plan, there's no changing in city code, it's just a plan, that is something that the state legislature supposedly has said is in compliance with state law. And my preference would be, is that we vote for something that we believe we have local control over. So we take those goals that are specific within the plan, that hopefully we will approve tonight, and allow the staff, and allow council members to have the ability to provide specific actions, that could be code requirements that allow for us to meet the goals that are established. I think we all agree that the goals that are within the current plan are, are supportable. We've, we've done those things within the city of Papillion. And so my preference would be, is to have local control, not to have a simple majority of legislatures say, "These are the things that we want you to do," which is, I think, what they've identified as being, "These are the things that we want you to do if you don't approve a plan." So I'm going to support the plan, I'm not going to support the amendment. I think there's a lot of time and effort, citizen input, obviously, the, the planning commission supported it also, so I'm going to support the plan, and I'm not going to support the amendment.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Mungard.
Well, okay, what you just said kind of confuses me, because I, as I understood the amendment, the motion, the plan that we have in front of us will be adopted if we, if we agree with Councilman Gaines, the plan that is in front of us- we, if we agree with Councilman Gaines, the plan that is in front of us will be adopted, but with those three...
Just real quick clarification of intent, because that's not my understanding. So I just wanted to make sure we understand what the motion to amend is.
Put it this way, his amendments don't make any sense unless they are additions to the plan. And that's how I took it.
That's why I want to ask for clarification, so we know what the discussion, the vote is. My understanding was it's a replacement. The, the motion to amend is for those specific items. Is it in place of the plan or in addition to the plan?
Well, the plan doesn't have any specific actions listed in it. It has options.
So your motion to amend, is it layering these three on top of the existing plan or is it replacing the existing plan?
The exist, the options in the plan exist whether or not this plan, they're, they're just options.
Let me, let me ask it another way. So the three specifics, for your motion to amend with the three specifics, would it be adding an additional page to this document in front of it, or is it pushing that document aside and having these three as a standalone? Additive or replacement? I just want to be real clear on what we're discussing and voting.
So let me, let me try to explain it differently, and I probably can't. But the options that are presented by this, the company, there are options that exist no matter what, but they are not a specific plan. And so this, this policy that they have, yes, these are options, but the policy and the position of the city of Papillion are the, the options that I presented until amended. So there's no way to, you can't really, because there is no specific plan currently in what's proposed to us.
Let me, let me ask it one other way. So the staff report and the motion that was in front of us had a document that was just, we just talked through. So that was what was on the floor, is that document. Your motion to amend, is it adding a page to that document, or is it pushing that document aside and now it's just one page with your three items on it?
Well, if it was just one page, we wouldn't comply with statute, because statute requires a whole bunch of things, and that's what that report does. So at the end of that report is the official city policy moving forward, which is my...
You're adding a pair, a page to clarify to the document we're discussing.
Which is what our, what, what the city of Papillion's specific actions are to meet compliance with the statute.
Because I missed that, so Mr. Mumgarde, you are correct. It's, it's adding to the document. Is it, was that real, is that clear with Mr. Sunday with your second?
It, it was my understanding that we're adding an action plan that didn't exist before.
To, to the document. Okay, so we're on the same page now. Go ahead.
With that understanding, I frankly don't see any downside in doing what Mr. Gaines has asked us to do. We adopt the plan that they brought in for, for, with us, with a couple specifics, three specifics. We have a plan, we move forward. If they don't work out, we come back and we change it. So I'm going to vote for the amendment if, because I want to adopt something tonight, and I don't think it hurts anything at all.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion to amend? If not, please vote. So again, just to be clear, a yes vote will add a page to the document we were talking about, and the three things that would be added would be prioritizing processing of applications that missing middle or affordable component, adding to the water bill education around NIFA and affordable state programs on financing, and then taking the whole document back to a committee for review and recommendations. Is that correct? Okay, so a yes vote would add that page to the existing document.
Five yes, three nays by Fanslow, Stube, and Ingberg.
Motion passes, so we're back to the motion as amended. Any further discussion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Seven yes, one nay by Ingberg.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is item F.3, Resolution R. 230187. We got some students in the audience. Once a year, we elect a council president. The role of the president is to fill in for the mayor when the mayor can't be here, so run the meeting, or if the mayor can no longer be the mayor, they become the mayor. And so the, the way we handle it is the eight council members can nominate who they want to be the president, and then they will vote on that if they're, and it's a secret ballot, and if, anybody can be nominated, and it'll take as many votes as it takes until we have a council president. So item F.3, Resolution R. 230187, a resolution to elect a new city council president for a term of one year. Is there a motion to open nominations for council president?
Motion.
Most by Councilman Gaines?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mumgarde. Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
The floor is open to nominations.
Mayor?
Sir?
I nominate Councilmember Steve Sunday for city council president. Following the procedure that I have followed for a number of years, it is his turn, and
Eight yes, zero nays.
Okay, the floor has closed nominations. We've only got one name. And again, our bylaws do allow for a secret vote, but there's only one name, so I think our standard practice is to bypass the secret vote, and if everybody is okay with that, I'll just take a motion to approve Resolution R. 230187, electing Councilmember Sunday as the council president. Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Mumgarde.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Sunday. Item F.4, Resolution R. 230188, a resolution to approve John F. Hardy as the corporate manager for Walmart Inc., doing business at Walmart 1671, for the Class D liquor license. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 230188? Motion by Councilman Mumgarde, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Is Mr. Hardy here? Okay, they weren't able to make it, and they notified you of that. Okay, thank you. Counsel discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
192. A resolution to approve the posting of the annual occupation tax report onto the city's website. Motion to approve Resolution R. 230192. Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Kluk. Any proponents or opponents? Counsel discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. F.6, Ordinance 2015, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2015? Motion by Councilman Fanslow, second by Councilman Sunday. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
It's all the regular agenda items. I don't think any committee's met. Do we have any comments from the floor? No comments from the floor? We got some students here. You want to come up and introduce yourselves and let us know why you're here? And we will wait for every one of them, so you got to go ahead and come up. Just share your name and what brought you out.
Hello, my name is Dominic Chachka. I am here with, from Troop 319, and I came here to work on my rank advancement and discuss the rights and obligations of a U.S. citizen.
My name is Taylor, and my troop is 461G, and I'm here to work on one of my requirements on communications.
My name is Emma, and I'm from Troop 461G, and I'm here for a requirement for the communication merit badge.
Mayor? Do we get a hint where Mickey and Minnie are this year? Get a hint where Mickey and Minnie are located this year?
There's always a couple of hidden gems in the lights, which encourage people to explore, and one's Minnie and Mickey, and there's always butterflies. Check out the butterfly garden as well. Head of ribbon cutting, Sheltering Tree, we've talked about Sheltering Tree a lot. It is a community for adult developmentally disabled to have a place of their own. They built in Shadow Lake. It's a wonderful facility. And again, we're talking about affordable housing. That's a unique population with a very specific housing need, and that's exactly what that was built for, is affordable housing. But you sit in their living room and you're overlooking the lake at Shadow Lake, you think you're in a million-dollar house. So really unique aspect of the community, and we're, we're blessed to have them. Also, the Community Foundation for years had put on Old German Christmas event, and they'd, and that had gone away during COVID, and it was the youth council that realized, you know, we're missing a tradition. And the youth council wanted to bring that tradition back, so they partnered with the Historical Society, and they put on Old German Christmas, and hope, I think that'll become a new tradition. So I want to thank the youth council for all of the work, and one of them is here. So thank you very much for doing that. And then dare graduation at Rumsey Station today. Officer Bamer's been doing that the last couple of years, and so had that graduation, and that was a great thing, so. Any other council comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Mumgarde. Please vote. Mr. Glover.
Eight yes, zero nays.
We are adjourned.